I'm being six thirty following the order. Please stand up and follow me. But let's be honest, it's too far. Okay, now it's the state so. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, our own, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Presentations, excuse me, introduction of the new police officer Nathan Noble, the staff presentation chief.
Mayor, council and other representatives tonight. It's my pleasure and honor and privilege to introduce to you our new officer that started last month. Before I get to the swearing in, I'm going to go ahead and give you a brief bio of his twenty, almost twenty years of law enforcement experience. Nathan was born and raised in Fort Worth area and at the age of sixteen made the bold decision to move to a cattle ranch in Oklahoma. After graduating from high school, he attended Oklahoma State University where he had got a degree in accounting. Well, continued to work at the ranch. In twenty, in two thousand and six, Nathan chose to pursue a career in law enforcement and joined the Bedford Police Department. And over his twenty nineteen plus years earned numerous accolades. To name a few, he was office of the year twice. He served on the mid cities drug tap, drug force task force, sorry, mid cities drug task force, I'll get it right. Not taking any drugs. Uh, become an op, became an operator and assistant team leader with the regional SWAT team. Nathan moved into criminal investigation division and before, before promoting to a sergeant. Leading both in patrol and also on a specialized deployment team. In addition to his leadership experience, Nathan is a firearms instructor, alert instructor, shoot house instructor. And holds a master peace officer with T. Cole. In two thousand, in twenty twenty-three, Nathan joined the double O police department. Before making decision to come over to the Barnumville Police Department, which is team number one, thank you, the chiefs watching them. Nathan lives with an amazing partner. Sergeant Pilar Food of the Richmond Hills Police Department. And his two children, a fifteen year old, twelve. And Nathan enjoys traveling, camping, but mostly loves being around his lovely family. Please join me, uh, welcoming Officer Noble to the Barnumville Police Department. Let's see, let's go, let's do this, my goods, I will celebrate your name, actually, this is my. Nathan, you're going to hold up your right hand, repeat after me, I state your name.
I am Nathan Noble.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of the Barnumville Police Office, of the office of the Barnumville Police.
For the town of Barnumville.
For the town of Barnumville. And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the constitution.
And defend the constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the ordinance of the town of Barnumville.
And of the ordinance of the town of Barnumville.
So how we got.
So how we got.
Welcome, thanks. And this time. That's the beginning of the plan, our new plan. You want to say anything, you can hit the floor.
I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for choosing our Barnumville. So session presented open meetings act, Texas government code chapter five five one, town, townable, recent, and so as in connection, everyone's with the following. Section five five one, four, seven, one, one and two, consultation with attorney. In private consultation, you seek the advice of the town attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer to. And to consult with the town attorney on a matter in which duty of attorney to the government, governmental body under the Texas discipliners, and with professional conduct of the state bar. Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act bench regulations. I'm being six thirty.
Hey, that's all, so, uh, so we'll just kind of see the trend continue, but it is something we watch, uh, we look at that data every month, and so it is something. Biggest news for us is we got our very first aerial apparatus, we had a hundred and seventy foot arrow with all the quint. Uh, we did a lot of training on it, all of our firefighters had to be trained in how to operate the aerial apparatus, it's a week long course, a certification through the state of Texas, and so. We put that in service on October fifth and it was in service at that station five fourteen in the Harvest community. It will be at the new station once we open the new station, so we're glad to have that, and we're going to be doing a official. Push in ceremony on November sixteenth, on Sunday, between three and four P M, so we'll send out some more information if you follow us, and hopefully we even put out some information about that, but. We just had our board meeting, they set that date, so excited about that, um, other things that are upcoming, we've got our, um. Our, um, our bi annual, I guess you call it, community advisory stakeholder meeting, so the mayors and the town managers and the police chiefs and the. And, uh, the key stakeholders in our community come with me and discuss all that happened that are going on at the E S D, you have more opportunity to have, have a round table discussion about what's going on. You know, your organizations, and so look forward to that, we'll be talking about, you know, what we're doing, we're at five twenty-six, our critique plan where we are, we have a nice dashboard we use. Just to kind of let you know, we're about forty-two percent, uh, complete on a three year fatigue plan, which if you think about theoretically, we're one year into it. So theoretically, we should be about thirty-three point thirty-three percent, and so we're actually at forty-two percent, so we're doing really well, getting my little objectives completed. Um, other big news, this past weekend, our firefighters were involved in length and a big pickleball. So we had a big tournament, our very first, uh, we worked with Lieutenant Care as educational foundation. And so the money is used for a scholarship, so it's kind of a way, we can't raise the money, but our firefighters could. And so it's going to be used towards like, uh, see if you have kids in high school and they say they want to go to junior college, go to a fire academy, or a paramedic school. They can apply for a scholarship to the foundation, and then to actually get awarded, to get their education paid for, so it was, it's for good cause, and so. Uh, our firefighters were humble, uh, they thought they were good pickleball players, and there were some old guys that could play through the pickleball, I think he's got sponsors, I remember him had like. Like, you know, like you'd see like a NASCAR, like they got all like these logos, like people made them to play, and it's like a professional league, you. And so our dad, you know, going out there in a t-shirt, you know, they're going to really beat him, and so, uh, it was fun though, except for the rain. You know, it came up pretty good rain that day, but I stayed until it rained, and when it rained, I left, so. But they finished up, they got done about seven o'clock, so a good time. Um, other, other good news, we're going to hold off on our, uh, veterans, our Veterans Day. Or Roundtable Day, uh, Flag Your Parents, so we've got so much going on, but we are going to be doing the Argott Food Bank, so we are working to be a point of contact. A point of collection for, uh, the boxes type of food bank, and so we want to always do that and get close to the holiday, especially around Thanksgiving, so we'll be doing that as well. Um, other than that, that's all the good news I have, but any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Number two, police department September two thousand and twenty-five statistics and activities, chief of grades, I think he's going to introduce Helen E. J. Our new planner, now, I don't think, I've been to this, this is our first catch meeting, I believe, and then. Uh, we want to thank Alison Cotton for filling in for the.
Yes, mayor, council, uh, I want to read a brief bio with our new planner. And, uh, want to welcome her, working with her quite a bit lately, along with Allison as well. Uh, Helen E. The gamer brings more than thirty years' experience working with municipalities, private sector developers, leading a wide range of development projects. She holds a degree in landscape architect from the Texas A and M University and is a certified planner through the American Institute of Certified Planners. Her background in design gives her an exceptional understanding of site planning and how to interpret developed codes, deliver solutions. That balances community needs with regulatory requirements. Her firm provides a variety of services to municipalities, including day to day and on call planning. Interim development director duties, comprehensive planning, ordinance preparation and amendments, and single family master planning. Helen E. Is known for her collaborative approach, working close to account staff, legal teams, engineering consultants, provide a thorough. Form review of complex development proposals. Her firm experienced expertise in development codes and emerging planning concepts brings us a valuable insight and perspective to the communities she serves. Please join me in welcoming Helen E. To our team.
I will say in the last several weeks that she is very, um. Knowledgeable and, and helps, uh, work very good at collaborating, not only with, uh, the legal team and, but also the residents and people that are bringing the plans to us, so she's done an incredible job. And has a little bit, like I said, thirty years of knowledge, so thank you all for what you've been doing lately with us and putting up with.
I've been enjoying y'all, I need to go on the record and say I started working when I was ten.
Well, thank you for being here, thanks for doing our team, uh, let me get into the police department, uh, stats, our stats are down also a little bit. We, we had a total, um, calls for service, a hundred and thirteen, uh, this month, now last year, we had only seventy-five, so we're a little up from last year. Uh, we did have more accidents this year than last year, we had twelve accidents, and the majority of those were all, as you know, on four oh seven, and we had some in parking lots as well. Um, parking crimes, we only had two, which is great, we only have eleven total, eleven years so far, which is incredible. Our law, those are lawsuits, as you know, um, one of those was at Kroger, another one was a cooler that was stolen, uh, so, uh, just pop thefts, minor thefts. Um, our traffic stops, we had two. Just, uh, how many, uh, in front of, uh, uptown all that, you know, that's, that's what we want to do is make it safe, these are narrow roadways. Keep our community safe, other walkers out there, and those are complaints that gentlemen like get, uh, we want to keep people that are walking, cycling, and just, you know, um. Keep them safe, and so they, when they see the red lights, uh, they know they're very certain. Yes, sir.
Did you have any stats on the, this might. Of future, uh, information, please to, to look at this, I've had someone, citizens implying that I've been down there, that said on Wolf Field on the outside. The intersection coming out of the, the street over to the four seven.
Mm-hmm.
If you exit, we'll send those, and you hit that stop sign again. That turn is a ninety degree turn on east, that was listed, I mean, and every vehicle, I say probably ninety-five cent vehicles, when they exit, go through that. And then make that right turn, they cross over in that center lane. On the eastbound, because that sets a sharp curve, a turn on the, on the, just look at that from time to time, and be around that, and this appears as to. About accidents, as to whether we have much accidents there, of course, that's a perfect place to get team on, and I see people. Close all the time trying to get that, do that, and go across that, but. I watch vehicles, especially vehicles, it's, it's only, you know, the former trailer, and they actually, they have to cross over that center line on that. That left lane on the eastbound, each time that they exit, go through that stop sign, and by that, that thing that is really about those. Just kind of, I just like to see something.
You have to pull the numbers as I, just in our report tonight, you know, there's four oh seven, I don't know that anyone were right there, most of ours at Hilltop. I'd have to say that I will pull those numbers for you and be able to show how many we have and that at that location.
Well, personal system didn't know that that's going to be a tech stop, and that's not a bargain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, we have nothing, I'm just curious, just to estimate the numbers. Big now, but I'm just curious as to, uh, if that's really a, a hand reserve, a cash out, we need to address that.
And you're saying, look, there you, or you talked about Wolf.
Four oh seven airbus.
He has right there, I mean, you're right there, the short turn, I'm just going to make sure I'm pulling this down off.
Sharp right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I go up the page.
If they, they even put a sixty degree turn in there, that would have gone a lot, I see that's, that's, that's a real age, and they're really not paying attention, maybe we'll do the exercise.
Yeah, I can pull those numbers, but I, I was calling about order, and I have to go on to the other line, yeah, so get back, you know, just, you just have to plan. A whole bunch harder while doing my best.
I said, that's, it's a text out, it's not a bargain deal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, administration, Shannon, thank you, Jim. Uh, yeah, Shannon.
Um, as of today, the bank balance is for general fund is four million, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred dollars and eighteen cents. The balance in reserves is six hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-six. Okay, September was, as we all know, the last month of the fiscal year. The total revenue collected in the month of September was a hundred and five thousand and ninety-three dollars. Here to date, which is year end, total is three million, eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We received sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars in sales tax revenue in September, which represents the July. Sales, and this is of course, does not include any quarterly pay, that's why I'm down so much. For all general funding expenditures. For all general funding expenditures, total expenditures for September was one, that, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Ending the year under budget by seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
Awesome.
And now we move it specifically at administration, administration department expensed a hundred and twenty-five, six hundred and six thousand in the month of September and ending under budget by thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy. Looking at police, police expense sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars in the month of September, and they ended under budget by forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. Obviously, we thrived more and expense less than what we budgeted, so good job. Yes.
Good job, buddy.
And then, um, we also had our third quarter investment report in the packet. And I'm just going to give you a brief summary of those. For the quarter ending September thirty, twenty twenty-five, the town's total investment portfolio decreased from five million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars to four million, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, four, four hundred and nine dollars. It's like means deduction of five hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Due to normate, normal operating expenditures, not any investment losses. We purchased a lot of the last, we finished up, um, in your face two. Uh, we started working on the parking lots and we discussed a lot, and at the end of the year, as we've talked about in the past, property taxes, those are limited in getting those this year, and then they, we only received a thousand month of September. So we receive all that at the beginning, and that's why our, usually in the third quarter is a little lower because of, you know, we're not bringing in all that revenue, that's where it's been, that's the big problem. Um, the town earned approximately seventy, uh, sorry, fifty-nine thousand in best interest income during the quarter with an average yield of approximately four percent on its South State Bank accounts, which is our general fund and then our reserves and of course CCPD and BCDC, and four point three three on the logic investment pool. As of quarter end, the portfolio consisted of four million, eighteen thousand, a hundred and eight dollars in the consolidated cash account. Six hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight, I'm sorry, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, eighty-eight dollars in reserve fund and a nominal balance in the logic pool of a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The portfolio remains fully compliant with the town's investment policy, the Public Funds Investment Act, maintaining a weighted average maturity of one day to ensure maximum liquidity and. Jim, were we going to put more into the reserve fund? We just, I was waiting till the total from September, and that way we know exactly what we can. I will update you on that.
Do we have to renegotiate this, need a little best in accounts of over a few percent?
They're giving us the federal rates. Um, we have been talking about the bank, we may be going out for our PR account, uh, our contract extended, and we did the one-year extension. But since the merge, we're not really happy with customer service, and that might be one of the next, next issue. Any other questions? Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. You consent agenda, this is Jenny, consistent on contractual housing being added by law, items may be approved by single, with a single motion, items may be removed. This, for the consent agenda by any county member, by making such a request, prior to the motion or vote. Number one, consider approval of September six, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. Number two, consider approval of early version spending in the Ad hoc traffic committee. Number three, consider approval of early voting spending in the town. All parking improvement subcommittee, go ahead, a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm making a motion. But send you, I don't think you want to pay that too.
All is in favor, item carried, I, motion carries five zero, thank you. Public hearing is in regular islands, conduct the public hearing, it's being, conduct the public hearing to hear public comment, discuss and take action on ordinance, many comprehensive zoning ordinance of the town, official zoning map to change the zoning classification from ag district to residential, five, R E five, on approximately a hundred, three one six acre tract of land situated in written also survey abstract number three, Town Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. Property is generally located west of Givens Road, north, north of West Jeter Road and South of Prince, Prince, it's on the other, Avenue. Avenue Adams on the half of one of three walling, Town Barton's file number, John, two thousand and twenty-five, that, there were one mistake. Of well-run walling addition, R and five, zoning, planning, zoning commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Over one, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, again, we're just talking about moving property from ag to R E five.
Yeah, this, I'll set my house name if you need myself.
Okay, Jim's going to refuse you. Thank you. So that presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, so the first item on your public hearing list, um, on the agenda is the property that is the walling property. It's rest of Givens, has furnished among West Jeter Road, the property is currently zoned with ad. It was submitted an application to zone to R E five, which is a five acre minimum lot size. The, um, there's an existing flat that has two lots, one sixteen point seven acres and the other one's eighty-three point six nine acres. And the approval of the rezoning would allow the developer, the landowner, to separate the property into, you know, smaller pieces, it would be replanted, the, the larger traps, and those would be a minimum of five acres. The, the property currently includes some residential homes, barns and other various accessory structures. And there are a couple of, um, gas wells, moving property, but also gas, uh, right-of-way easements to access those wells. And through our research, we determined that one of the wells is considered, um, through the Texas Railway Commission to be temporarily abandoned, but has not been formally abandoned. And the other one is still active by industry and are both very low, if anything, in, in production. And, um, when replats go forward, we always identify the wellheads on the construction plans beyond the plats. So that everyone's aware, and should the wells be abandoned, or if they stay and are in existence when the bar is planted and say homes are constructed around it, folks know where those wellheads are located. And it is important to point out that the, the request is in compliance with your future land use plan, on the law, the comprehensive plan. And that's stuff that's very important, that your roadmap for your development of your community, which is a zoning request going forward. And as I mentioned, um, I'll start and tell you, the, your code allows for, or provides for criteria when we look to review and consider a rezoning property for the P and Z commission as well as city council. Those items are up on the screen. And so should the rezoning be approved, the property would need to comply with all of the development regulations. You know, technical construction standards, subdivision ordinance, zoning limits, all of those developing rights. The notifications were, um, distributed as I've fired in the newspaper, as well as surrounding property owners. Uh, this afternoon, we had two letters in favor of the rezoning and three letters in opposition. A staffer demands approval of the application as presented. And available if you have any questions for junior applicants, here as those, the landowner, should you have any questions for them? And I believe the applicant piece of presentation.
With my badge?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Ellen.
Um, I do have a presentation, Helen Eve did a great job, so I'm going to go through this quickly because it's a lot of the same information. But, um, hi, my name is Patricia Phan, I'm a planner with McAdams, relocated at State Highway one twenty-one. Uh, forty-four hundred, St. Evan's, Texas. About this site, uh, like Helen Eve has said, it is just north of West Jeter Road, it's about a hundred acres. It's surrounded by single-family uses north, south, east and west of the property. The property is currently being used as a single-family residential and will continue to be used as a single-family residential. And there is exa, uh, existing gas wells outside. Uh, the existing zoning is ag agriculture, we are requesting R E five, residential five, agriculture has a minimum of ten acres, while residential five has a minimum of five acres. Um, it is surrounded by agriculture, residential five, residential two, and manufactured home zone. Future land use is for five acres, um, that is defined in the comprehensive plan as these areas have been established to protect existing areas where lot sizes start at the five acre minimum development. Within these areas is intended to be low-density, large lot residential additionally. Many of these areas been, have been impacted by natural gas drilling, therefore making it more desirable to have these larger lots spaced at a great distance from the law. Um, our goals for the site are just to be consistent with the surrounding zoning pattern, consistent with the future land use and comprehensive plan. Being good neighbors throughout the entire process and support economic development. That's all I've got, and, and if you have any questions, we are here to help answer those, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, the time being, seven oh nine, open the public hearing. Shannon? Yes, as Helen Eve mentioned, we did see five letters. Um, the first one was from Dr. Peter Walling at six twenty-four West Jeter Road in support. Then we received one, the agent for Cami Real Property Trust, um, in opposition. Michael Noel at seven oh four Burley Court opposed. Drew and Tiffany Walling in support. Yanni Onnu, Burley Court, lot seven C, in opposition. D U R G H O Y, I said. Would anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition?
I'm happy to speak if you have any questions.
Let me close the public hearing a little bit. Um, time being seven ten, close the public hearing. Anybody have any questions for Drew?
No, I mean, this complies with our comprehensive land use plan, I mean, I understand some people may not be happy with it, but if this does fit, then we.
Yeah, it's not that, if it forms, yeah.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, so we get back to, uh, let's see, uh, I made a motion that we approve, um, the rezoning classification from agricultural to residential five, R E five, or approximately hundred point three, one six acre tract of land situated on the new, and also survey aspect number three, Town Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. Second is it?
Motion carries four, you know, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Number two, conduct a public hearing to hear public comment, discuss and take action on ordinance regarding conditional use permit. We see you fee to allow drive-through, pick-up only on property zone, general commercial plan development, GCPD on block two C, lot one R on parallel addition phase C, approximately two point oh five, oh five, four nine acre tract of land situated in EP home. Survey abstract number sixty-five, Town Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. Property, property is generally located north of East Jeter Road, north of Justin Road, open four oh seven, and east of Justin Road. So, applicant is AS one, four, TC phase two, LP, Town Bartonville file number zone two, or Z O N, two thousand and twenty-five dash oh oh two, Montana track. Eight B, Charleston U P, the public hearing is continued to November the fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, planning and zoning commission meeting. Staff presentation, Helen Eve.
Thank you. Um, so this particular item was submitted and, you know, we, we determined that there were a number of items that were missing. So we determined that it was an incomplete application. My clerk has been working with the, the applicants to have them submit the missing items. And we had requested to receive those earlier in October so that we could process for the November P and Z meeting. We haven't received anything even today. Um, we reached out last week and again today, asking for them to withdraw and to avoid city council having to deny, but we watched this one and the next one, but we haven't even heard from, um, responding to that. So unfortunately, we have to recommend the city council deny this application in the midst.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Time being seven thirteen, I'll have to open the public hearing. Shannon, do you want to say anything?
I, that was me, okay.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Does anyone wish to speak against? So time being seven fourteen, I close the public hearing. So I need a motion for denial because the um, application process, the, the side plane packet isn't.
I made a motion that we deny, uh, the side plan application, um, for the.
I'm sorry, this is the C and P, as I mentioned.
Oh, C and P, alright. Hold on. Just to, to. I would do.
Let me check it.
Uh, I made a motion that we deny the application for a side plan on R E zone, general commercial plan development. CGPD on block two C, lot R one, on the car, on, on addition, they see an approximate two point zero five four nine acre tract of land situated in the EP home in the survey, abstract number sixty-five. Town Bartonville, Denton County, Texas, thank you.
I'm sorry, you still sent that time, so you, who do you need the conditional use permit?
Conditional use, yes, that's right.
Done, thank you. So, so. All is in favor. Motion carries five zero, thank you. Number three, to conduct public hearing to hear public comment, discuss and take action on site plans, on property zone, general commercial plan development. On block two C, lot one, I, by a lot of additions, they see in approximately two point oh five four nine acre tract of land situated in the EP home in survey, abstract number sixty-five, Town Bartonville, Denton County, Texas, the property is generally located north of East Jeter Road, north of Justin Road, Edmond boy seven, and east of Justin Road, Edmond boy seven. Applicant is AS one fourteen, TC phase two, LP, Town Bartonville file number, SP, two thousand and twenty-five dash oh oh two, Montana track, A V side plan. Public hearing is continued to November, uh, in the November fifth, planning and zoning commission. Staff presentation.
To normally see, this one didn't include the thirty-way waiver request and needs to turn that in? But we can't do anything with, with, with the, with the, with the fact that, right?
So I'll open the public hearing, and on time being seven sixteen, open the public hearing, would anyone like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Time being seven sixteen, close the public hearing. Um, do I have a motion to for denial, side plan?
Make a motion. Make a motion to deny a side plan in the west of property zone, general commercial, planning open GCPD on block two C, lot one R, on the car, audition, which base the in approximately two point zero five four nine acre tract of land situated in EP home in survey, abstract number sixty-five, out of, out of Denton County, Texas. So.
All is in favor. Motion carries five zero, thank you. Number four, discussing, consider more rejection bids, of bids and complete contract miscellaneous asphalt pavement repair on all services and offerings, town minister, execute necessary documents on the hack of the town. Uh, staff presentation, Per.
Mayor Council, uh, we received sixteen bids for the miscellaneous asphalt pavement repair on call contract. After reviewing all submissions, T H L C C was identified as a most responding bidder and their proposal fully meets the town's specifications and project requirements. Out of Texas, that house under contract will allow us to efficiently.
Out of Texas, T H S under contract will allow us to efficiently. Address minor paving and roadway issues without having to get quotes or bids as they come up throughout the year. Helping us extend the lifespan and safety of our streets. I'll answer any questions if anybody has any questions regarding the information that was. Given to you in your bank.
So this is just have a company we use, when we need, because we, yeah.
I have sixteen bids, covers it, so.
Need to discuss.
I have the access to this. Almost gives us a immediate response. It's better than what we actually listen, but we don't like to return. Same time way two, three, or four weeks to go out and have it done. This will have something to look at, but these actually be done.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, y'all approved two hundred fifty thousand dollars in our street maintenance for this, uh, for this project.
Any other discussion, the questions?
I have a question.
You have a motion?
I'm making a motion. To the world Texas, Texas, seven of city. The miscellaneous asphalt and the better alcohol services contact and automated handles, but the energy may save on the time.
Second. All is in favor? Motion carries five zero, thank you. Number five, discuss and consider ordinance remaining in Town Bartonville, some of the ordinance is to chapter three, building regulations, article three point. One oh, fences and walls, section three point ten point zero zero three, by admitting fence regulations to prohibit private fencing and O P A K walls in certain areas and providing effective. Staff presentation, Kirk.
Mayor Council, um, over the last several months, I've received some, uh, complaints and. The ordinance was designed to maintain Bartonville open rule, character by the Levantine solid fencing. Recently, like I stated, I've had some concerns about some fences that have on a, on acres that are just below two acres, which is permitted for our current ordinance. Um, their current ordinance prohibits solid or O P A K. Uh, privacy fence and the walls on lots larger than two acres. The proposed revision would be allow solid fences and walls only within the manufactured home zoning district. Privacy fences and walls would be prohibited in all other zoning districts.
Yeah.
Answer any questions?
Any discussion?
Questions? Actually, I hope you have, yes. Flashing, maybe it's Jason.
No, it's not, Jeff.
They covered it, yeah, I, I didn't know all the gadgets there, and then they threw them in. I mean, that's like, they're pushing, so. They've covered that gap now, so.
People inherently do not like this. I couldn't finish the gotten from there. I don't know, I don't know the others, so. Um. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to applicable ordinance and then in the town of Bartonville, code ordinances, chapter three, building regulations, article three point one zero. Fences and walls, section three point one zero, one point zero zero three, by admitting fence regulations to prohibit private fencing for O P A K laws. Certain areas as presented.
Excellent. So, I'll ask you back. Motion carries five zero, thank you. Future agenda, I am, I am just trying to be like the test, I'm coming to you, David.
Oh, very good.
I'm in six forty-one, I've heard a name. Seven more times. Well, that's almost.
They already thought back, and then you kind of go. That's really cool, yeah, she got a show.
Yeah.